January 16, 2024, Ogden City Council meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. And I'd like to invite Vice Chair Ritchie to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you for that. This evening, we have acknowledgements on the agenda, but we actually have invited a special guest to be with us for acknowledgements as well to further acknowledge that yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We're inviting Winter Storm to come up and recite a poem that Winter had recited at the MLK Breakfast and Unity March yesterday. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you all so much for having me this evening. I'm super grateful to be here to continue to celebrate MLK Day. Very important. My name is Winter Storm. It's Winter with a Y instead of an I. I'm not all about the Is, but I definitely am all about why we do the things that we do. I am the CEO and Executive Director of Utah Black Artists Collective. I have been a published poet since eight years old. I grew up right up here in South Ogden. I'm originally from Illinois, but I've been here since a very young age. And art is what I love. It's what drives me. I have a three-year-old son who's really amazing and who I'm teaching art as well. And I've been a drummer since 10 years old. So I guess you can say that I love the arts a little bit. This poem is called "Revolutionary Dreamer." "I have a dream," said Dr. King. "I have a dream" became a revolutionary prayer, a generational mantra that we believe in on repeat. "I have a dream." Even when we can't fathom how, I hear "We shall overcome," replaying like our favorite song as a promise to ourselves. And we mean it. I know that the day is near. Folks say not to live in fear, be brave, but don't be caught up in bravery. Dare to be the change. Dare to be revolutionary. And I'm catching on to more things because becoming the beloved community has become so important to me. My beliefs: generational wealth, not conversational wealth. We are H-O-M-E, hopes of mending everything. It isn't just my poem. Call me sunshine on a rainy day. Can't always keep all the clouds away. My joy just shines right through. A generational gift. Black joy is our beginning. We wear magic smiles that light up darkness with resilience. It welcomes you in like an altar and says, "Come as you are with a genuine heart." Black joy is the message. I've heard for ages that black is strength, and I've listened. I felt the connection embody the power like my blood was finally free. Like I have a dream will one day transform into our reality. My modern-day dream has been and always will be hope for every soul that love dwells at one's core. A love that does not harm is all that we've ever asked for. A statement that I think deserves a second tour. Listen. My joy has been and will remain hope for every soul that love dwells at one's core. It's all that we've ever asked for. So just watch as my joy keeps smiling through it all, like Granny's weary voice that always says, "Baby, I'm fine." Like she hasn't always put herself on the line, no sugar coating. Black joy finds a blessing in every lesson so sweet. Black joy is precious. I have a dream that Dr. King is still dreaming for a more peaceful reality. We are his H-O-M-E. We are the hopes of mending everything. So may we continue to rise together while becoming the beloved community. For we have a dream is the climb. We shall overcome now and every time. For we must find joy in radical self-healing. For we are all the deeper meaning. And when we wake, yes, we all deserve to keep breathing. The generational gift that just keeps on giving, embedded in each of us, is persevering. So may we all continue believing. May we all continue dreaming. May we all continue simply breathing while believing in becoming the beloved community. I still have a dream. My question is, do you? Thank you so much.
Thank you. So powerful. Thank you so much.
That was great.
Okay, anybody want to follow that up with any other acknowledgements? We didn't think about that part.
I don't necessarily want to follow that up. No, I appreciate that, Winter. Thank you for being here. That was a good event. And I think the keynote speaker every year is always outstanding. And I can't remember his name. He shared a quote from Shirley Chris Holmes who said, you know, Martin Luther King, the day of service, right? Service is the rent we pay for the privilege of living here on this earth. And I just love that quote. And he shared that, and I jotted that down. And I thought, what a great mantra to have to embody trying to serve. You don't have to look very far to see opportunities to serve. And so I hope we all take that.
Yeah, it was a wonderful event.
It's funny, I wrote that same quote down.
Did you?
Yeah. Denny Johnson.
Denny Johnson, that's right, yeah. He's phenomenal.
Okay, great.
And thank you, Winter, for coming. I really appreciate it. And just powerful tonight, and especially with our special guests here as well. So thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, well, we're very, very excited. We have some wonderful guests that have been traveling for many, many hours to come and visit us. And they just cannot wait to get to someplace to settle and have a little rest. So we're very excited to be celebrating the 70th anniversary of Ogden's sister-city relationship with Hof, Germany. And so we have a lot of representatives from Hof here. We have the Lord Mayor here. We have members of the city council. We also have hosted these groups many times over the years. And we actually, as a council, had planned to visit and staff had planned to visit. In 2020, some people had even bought their tickets to come. We were so excited. My spouse was very excited. But then, of course, the pandemic came along. And so then we couldn't come, and we're so sad we didn't make it. But one day, we will make it, whether it's us or the next group. Who knows? And we're really excited. We have our new mayor, Mayor Nadolski, is new to probably all of you, a former council member. And then we have several other new council members since the last time many of you were here. But we do have our past city council member, Amy Wicks, here in the audience, who has visited and made really great relationships with these folks too. So we're very excited about that. So I think up next on our agenda, so I have to just turn my page here, we are going to hear from our mayor, Ben Nadolski.
Thank you. Just want to welcome our guests here. I know you had quite a long flight and a lot of traveling to get here, so I won't hold you for too long. But it's an honor to have you in our community. It's an honor to have your partnership and our relationship with you. We hope to be as good of hosts as we possibly can be for you and look forward to. We have a whole bunch of festivities that I look forward to. It's funny, for this week, people have been calling me Lord Mayor. I think in honor of you, really. But a lot of people in the community know that you're here. We're thrilled to have you and look forward to celebrating our relationship and cultural exchange.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, we'd love to invite the Hof Lord Mayor Eva Dula to come and speak at the podium. And we speak in the mic because there are people listening online. And then this does go on our social media channels and everywhere too. So you'll be able to see that later if you want to look back at the video.
Okay, thank you. Dear Mayor Benjamin Nadolski, dear Mrs. Tuberka, ladies and gentlemen of the Ogden City Council and dear ladies and gentlemen of the Hof City Council. First of all, I would like to congratulate you, Mr. Benjamin Nadolski personally and on behalf of the Hof City Council on your election as mayor of Ogden. If I understand correctly, you have just been in office for about two weeks. And I hope that our meeting also is a good start to your term of office. And I wish you much success in your work for Ogden and the citizens of your city in the years to come. And I'm really looking forward to our exchange because Hof and Ogden not only share a 70-year history of twinning, but also some challenges. I'm looking forward to our exchange. Ladies and gentlemen, we are very pleased that in 2024 we now be able to celebrate a special anniversary here in Ogden with all of you, 70 years of the Ogden-Hof town twinning. And that's really special because that means three or more generations of partnership. And that's the generation of our grandparents who lived through the Second World War and its terrible consequences. It's the generation of their children who have understood how important encounters across national borders and continents are in order to maintain peace and to deepen understanding between nations that we previously, that were previously enemies. They have understood that understanding and knowing about each other holds the global community together. And finally, the third generation, which in recent decades has increasingly taken peace and security for granted, at least in the Western world, and who has partially lost awareness of what needs to happen to maintain peace and understanding in the world on the big political stage, but also on a small scale. Regardless of the generation to which each of us belongs, given the developments of the last few years, many of us ask ourselves, what can we do to make our contribution to making the world more peaceful again, safer for us, but also for them who come after us? Because many people, including me, have children whose future we're maybe worried about. Those who say, "Why have a town-twinning relationship? It's no longer needed?" I would like to say, yes, it is needed in this time. We need it right now. Seventy years of the Hof-Ogden Town Partnership means 70 years of learning, 70 years of exchange, and 70 years of understanding and trusting one another. How will this grow in the world if we don't work for it, each to their own, no matter how small? We as urban communities can therefore act as mediators and mentors for young people. We can offer forums and places to meet and also help with networking between experts and initiatives so that learning and recognition arise that includes perspectives from different cultures and communities like Ogden and Hof and thus enriches the discussion. Let us keep this thought in mind as we meet in this anniversary week. Maybe we can give some food for thought here in Ogden and take it home with us. I am therefore very grateful to your former mayor, Raymond Wright, and our Hofer, August Brandt, that this town partnership came about. The letter can be seen on the partnership certificate for the 70th anniversary, which we are about to sign together today. At this time of the picture, we will see the young man was 21 years old. And so much enthusiasm, curiosity, and drive continue to radiate to this day. And we would like to honor and remember that. It's difficult to express in a gift what I and we also associate with our partnership. We still want to try even we know that the real gift is the partnership itself. In this bag, it's not only one, we have some of them. In this bag, it's designed and manufactured in Hof. You will find a small history book that portrays the personalities who were instrumental in our partnership. In addition to August Brandt, there's Scott Sneddon with his life-size buffalo as a guest gift, the Bennett family with a replica of the Hof Town Hall. We saw it when we came here by bus. The first time I saw it, I knew it from many pictures before. And it's really, it's existing, yeah. In addition to the stories and newspaper articles with this gift, we would like to give you a little insight also into the modern young arts and crafts in Hof. The items in the bag are all manufactured by newly-founded companies based in Hof. One I will show.
I'm excited. It's an exciting surprise.
And this is the Werschtlackessel where our famous sausages are kept hot. Small, and it's felt and it's handmade. And there are much more surprising things. Ladies and gentlemen, the town-twinning spirit thrives on the commitment of the town community, from the commitment of universities, schools, and clubs, the citizens themselves. We all want to broaden our horizons and broaden our perspectives with curiosity and open-mindedness. Through direct dialogue, connections are made and future generations are made aware of peace and mutual respect. We have succeeded in doing this over the last 70 years. And I hope that we all will continue to do so in the next 70 years. We from Hof will definitely make our contribution to this. We also want to pass on the friendship to the next generation. And as my father, the former Lord Mayor, has been here in Ogden with his son, my brother, I think it's 30 years ago, maybe. So I am here today with our city council and partners, but also with my eldest of three sons to bring the partnership into the next generation and to continue. And finally, I want to say a huge thank you to all of you for inviting us and hosting us here in Ogden with so much friendship and heart. And we are very, very happy to be here. And we look forward to the next days.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Great, thank you so much. Any comments from other council members? And I know Mara may want to make a comment as well.
Thank you very much. We're welcome to Ogden as well. And I just wanted to acknowledge we have Professor Jan Hamer from Weber State University, who was on an academic exchange to Germany and to Janine Eller Smith as well because they arranged for the delivery of a replica of our horse, the painted horse. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that that happened in the interim and appreciate them before, in between times of having that relationship to carry that on. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you so much, Jan. Any other comments up here? And then we'll invite the council members up.
Chair, I'd love to. It was very...
Is your mic on?
I think so.
Okay.
Maybe I just didn't speak loud enough. But it was so good to see some of you that came the last time. It was nice to rekindle that awareness. And we're certainly happy those of you who this is your first time. We hope you have a good experience. Being German is part of me also. I have some heritage from Germany, even though I don't know one word. Incidentally, your English is very good. Congratulations on that. But look forward to spending time with you after you've rested and cut out from your travel time. But we wish you the very best time here in Ogden.
Sure. We don't usually get cut.
Ooh, ooh.
That doesn't happen very often, though.
Chair, I would love to say something. I would love to say something. The Ogden-Hof partnership has been an impactful part of my whole life. I remember being young and going to the Ogden-Hof activities, skiing down 25th Street and seeing that go. But I think I've mentioned to some earlier. When I was younger, I think in 1987, I got to be on a soccer team that got to go to Hof and travel through Germany and other European countries. And there's a display in the back that kind of talks a little bit about that. And I was able to have people from the soccer team live with me and make those friendships. And then later, I was able to live in Germany for a couple of years. So it's really remarkable what Ogden and Hof have been able to to not only create, but also build and sustain. And I appreciate the effort that you and your city have put into our relationship and the desire and the willingness to continue to create a greater relationship and to continue to build on it. So I applaud you all. I'm thankful that you finally made it after two days of traveling. But you all look fantastic. And I'm so excited to have you here in our city. And I hope you have just a great time. But thank you all.
Bart, I thought you would speak some German.
I'm gonna try. I just need a little bit of patience from everybody. So we can do it.
I would just echo the comments of my peers here. Welcome. We know it's been a long day. We look forward to this week and are excited to spend more time with you.
Okay, great. Well, we'd love to invite the council members that have come to come up and introduce themselves if they'd like to, say a few words if they want to, if you want to come up.
Yeah.
No pressure, no pressure. On the mic, if you don't mind. That way the people that are listening will be able to hear you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Andrea Hering. I am city council since 22 years.
Wow.
Yes, in Hof. And I'm the second time here in Ogden. The last time it was, I think it was eight years, no, it was eight years ago.
Was it eight? Six. I think it's...
Or 16.
20.
Oh, because I feel like I was on the council.
2015, yes. Oh, nine years, yes. So it's very nice to be here. I'm so thankful to know you, to have many times, many hours with you and with our friends. Thank you.
Remember, the last time you folks were here, I took you on a walking tour in the historic district. It was fun.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Matthias Lenzin. I'm also city council member from Hof. And yeah, I visited Ogden last time, 2009, so it's 15 years ago. And I'm also excited the same way like my colleagues for the Hof Winterfest and enjoy the time here and your hostage here in Ogden. And this time, I brought my wife with me. So I hope it will be a great week for us all together. And yeah, looking forward to it.
Welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the invitation. I came here with my husband, but he had a knee stomach, and I'm alone here now. But he is also a council member since 1996. I visit this town, 2015, I think, was the last. And I was very impressed from the fireman apartment.
Oh, yes.
Yes, and also we saw the Golden Spike.
Oh, yes.
And it's also a very historic enrollment here, original. My stand in our hometown is the workshops for civil affairs and also for markets and much more, a lot of thing more. And I don't know which is the time here in America, but in our hometown, we have also problems with money. I don't know if it's also the same. I don't know, but...
What was it? I didn't hear what you said.
We have problems. We have no money, money for civil affairs. And so every time, I'm impressed about your things you can do here. I also have seen the Tabernacle Corps. And I remember sometimes the young men came to the mission from the moment. And we had a good speak about that every time they came to my door. And we take... So I thank you very much, and I have a joy. We all have a joy. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Please, do what you'd like.
My name is Iris Leishauer. On Monday, since Monday, I've been in the city council.
Oh, congratulations.
I'm the youngest. Not an age. And 2005, Mr. Bill and Melissa Bennett come to Hof with dancers from the high school. And so it's a beginning from a big friendship. And I was often here in Ogden and in Caseville and in Salt Lake City. And I love it. And I love the mountain. And it's very nice to be here again.
Welcome.
Yes, and thank you.
Thank you.
To be here. Thanks.
And good luck.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
My name is Gudrun Kine. I'm a council member since 2020. I'm sorry, I have learned English in school 50 years ago, and it's very bad. But I hope behind this week, my English is very better. And I prefer to work for young people and for handicapped people because I'm the oldest, but... And for climate.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for being here.
Anybody else? How about you, Bill? Would you like to say anything, Bill? Would you like to come up? Yeah, I know you are a huge host of this event. Please come on up.
Dandy.
You know, you're sort of like honorably elected for this event, so...
Well, I haven't even been elected yet. Maybe I'll run someday. But I would like to thank you all, all of you for the support of the sister-city relationship. I wrote up a short write-up for the Ogden Rotary to make a presentation. And I find that I've been around this program for 25 years. And when we went to Hof...
And when we went to Hof to have our dancers dance with Iris' girls in that joint dance recital, that was four months before Scott Sten passed. And he had such a passion for the sister city program. It was the last, he had planned to go and was not able to go with us. But it dawned on me that, yeah, that we need to find younger people with the interest and the wherewithal and the desire to continue to share ideas, to share friendships and share lifelong relationships. And I appreciate all the city does, all the county does. And the party this weekend is a manifestation of the interest that continues in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so up next it looks like we have the certificate recognizing the 70 years of town twinning between Ogden and Hof. Is that something we are signing or? Next is the resolution is next, yeah. Oh, no worries. Oh, no worries. I know luggage problems. That's probably the worst of the loss, right? No worries, we can wait on that. Okay, then I'll invite Councilmember Blair to read our resolution.
Okay.
In German.
Yeah.
All in German.
Yeah. Herzlichen Willkommen zu Ogden. Es freut mich, Ihnen zu begrüßen. Zu begrüßen. Und wir sind sehr stolz von unserer Partnerschaft. Yeah, that's a new word for me.
They're saying yes, they're saying yes.
Okay. Okay. So celebrating the 70th anniversary of the Ogden City-Utah-Hof-Germany Sister-City Relationship. Whereas since 1954, Ogden City and Hof, Germany have built a profound and enduring sister-city relationship. This partnership marked the first sister-city relationship between the United States and Germany following World War II. Over the years, this partnership has cultivated a better understanding of international relations, cultural and economics. And whereas Hof is located in the Bayern region of Germany and was the first city visited by Eastern immigrants at the end of the communist rule. And whereas initiated by Ogden City Mayor Raymond Wright and prompted by Frank M. Browning, then president of the Bank of Utah, this sister-city program began when Mr. Browning sponsored August Brand from Hof, Germany to work at his bank in Ogden. This historical connection laid the foundation for the enduring and meaningful relationship we all celebrate today. And whereas over the span of 70 years, Ogden and Hof have exchanged cultural and educational opportunities. Ogden City has had countless groups and representatives visit Hof and in return has welcomed more than 2,500 of our German friends to Ogden. Notable moments include transforming the Hof Winter Carnival into the Hof Winter Festival in 1997, hosting elected officials and volunteer firefighters in 2015, adding the Hof Rathaus to Ogden City's Christmas Village in 2018, and the design of a specialized training program by Ogden Parks and Recreation for visiting Hof American football players in 2019. Unfortunately, the council's planned trip to Hof in 2020 was canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the thriving connection between Ogden and Hof stands as a testament to the unity of our community leaders and residents from diverse cultures. Despite the geographical distance that separates our cities, we have come together to build, nurture, and sustain meaningful relationships. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogden City Council and Mayor Benjamin K. Nadolsky proudly commemorate the 70th anniversary of the Ogden City-Hof-Germany Sister-City Relationship. We extend our appreciation and best wishes to Lord Mayor Eva Dula and all the residents of Hof for their contribution to this successful and enduring relationship, passed and adopted by the Ogden City Council and Mayor Benjamin K. Nadolsky this 16th day of January 2024. And with that, I would make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Oh, so many seconds. So this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yavon.
Nice. Well, thank you. So maybe we'll have the mayor and the council members come up and, oh, the lord mayor, sorry, the lord mayor. And then we'll take a photo as well. And we can have your families in the photo, right? Whoever wants to be in the photo.
Down on our usual spot, right? What's up?
This is my court. All right. And Brandon, one more for Brandon.
One, two, three. Three.
Okay. Good. Yeah, and then we have these other gifts too. Yeah, we can give her the box back. Is this our gift? And then is that sign a gift? Is that a gift?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the sign and that banner?
And the banner, okay. Guess I'll go, man.
All right. Okay.
Okay, all right.
Let's keep going.
Well, maybe, yeah, for having come up. And can I have it?
Wherever you'd like.
Was it casual?
Yeah. Just give it to him, we'll ship it.
Yeah.
That was easy.
Wait, we can mail it, though. Jan deliver it. Yeah, Jan.
I think Jan left. Did the horse, I'm out.
Yeah, they're on the. And then we have a. We have a belt buckle.
Lord Mayor. I didn't until I read the proclamation this week. What triggered that with him, do you suppose? Or with the city, yes, understand how that. Yes. Both of them? There's two people there now.
Brandon. We're gonna mail it to him.
Mail that, okay. Well, thank you so much. We have a little bit of a longer meeting, but you are welcome to go and rest if you want or if you want to stay, whatever you would like.
And they can eat if they want to eat.
Oh, yeah, food. I need the food if you want to too. We have a little bit more, three more items on the agenda. But you're welcome to go eat if you'd like to. Thank you so much. Please have a good rest. Very fun. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. We first have the joint work session of August 1st, 2023, the joint work session of October 3rd, 2023, the work session of August 29th, 2023, the work session of September 26th. I can't help but laugh, sorry. Okay, wait, sorry, I apologize. The work session of September 26th, 2023, and the regular meeting of November 14th, 2023. That's Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
Okay, and then up next we have the regular meeting of September 26th, 2023, and the work session of October 24th, 2023, Vice Chair Ritchie.
Yes, I reviewed those. I thought those were a lot of minutes. But now looking at Councilmember Blair's, I gratefully reviewed those two meetings and they found them to be accurate.
Awesome. And the regular meeting of September 12th, 2023, the regular meeting of October 3rd, 2023, the joint work session of November 14th, 2023, Councilmember Hyer.
Yes, Chair, I've reviewed those and found them to be accurate.
Good. I mean, it's only three, so.
It wasn't bad.
The closed session of October 29th, 2023, the regular meeting of August 29th, 2023, the regular meeting of October 17th, 2023, the work session of September 12th, 2023, and the work session of October 17th, 2023, Councilmember Waite.
Yes, I reviewed those and thank you for giving me some items to read on the plane. I've reviewed those and found them to be accurate. And I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Waite, a second by Councilmember Blair to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm just really happy you all are getting these all done before getting back in your seat. Yeah.
And I want to say, and before we move on, thank you because these are, it makes it much easier to remember what we did though when they're closer, so thank you.
That is helpful. It's true. Sometimes I read back, I'm like, wow, that was a long time ago.
So thank you.
And up next we have consent items, the consideration of appointing Mayor Benjamin K. Nadolsky and the reappointment of Councilmember Richard Hyer to the Central Weaver Sewer Improvement District Board.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt the item list under common consent.
I would second the consent items.
We have a motion by Councilmember Blair, a second by Vice Chair Ritchie to approve the consent items. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and thank you both for your service on that board.
Thank you for the reappointment. That's been very fulfilling for me. I know, it's something I've enjoyed a lot.
Thank you. Up next we have time for public comments. And this is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns or ideas. You have three minutes to speak. You can step up to the microphone. Or if you're on Zoom meeting, you're welcome to raise your hand. Come on up, Linda, and then we'll go online to Angel after that.
Hi, Linda Sanchez. I only heard part of the work session, but I was pretty impressed getting information from Harvard. So I guess you put that together. I really, I did find that very wonderful, actually, to get some input. And their slide presentation, very clear, very professional. I really liked that. One of the things I would like to talk about just coming up into this, into the new year is when we have public hearings for a specific item, sometimes it just seems like the public hearings are that night. I would encourage you to have some time because sometimes it feels like maybe your guys' minds have already been made up. And then therefore sometimes, sometimes as public, we do have things that come up that we might be able to give you guys ideas or brainstorm or other options. So maybe just don't think about it that night or don't make a vote on that. Have a little bit of time because a lot of public comes first specific items and then they get discouraged because they don't feel like they're being heard. The other thing, I'm not for sure who to talk to about this, but the last couple of times I've come in, I'm really thirsty. And the water fountain out there, I don't know if you guys have seen it. I was like, oh, my gosh. It is like white and milky. And I don't know who to bring that up to. So I don't know if it needs a filter or something.
The mayor.
Yeah.
I don't know. It just might be something to look into.
Thank you. I don't know because I don't use that microphone.
Thank you guys for everything you do.
Thank you. And we'll go online to Angel and then come back, okay? Yeah, she's gonna speak first. Oh, sorry, Angel is online. She's gonna speak first, if that's okay. I'm sorry.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Oh, I'm happy to wait.
So it's okay for me to go ahead and talk?
Okay, go ahead, yes.
Okay. Just a real quick thing. First of all, I just want to say I'm excited that the Hof-Germany people are here. I didn't really, I knew we had a partnership with Germany, but my family's from Bavaria. So I'm real excited that I find that we're partners with them. Secondly, I like to support Linda and what she was saying about public hearings. And this is something I've tried to get up and say something in the past about. But maybe I didn't express it very well. Is that it is like a slap in the face to people that come in here to talk at a public hearing. They've taken the opportunity to come in, express themselves. And y'all maybe have already discussed it in the past. So you sort of have an idea what you're gonna do. But those folks that are coming in to be heard don't realize some of that. So when they come and express their concerns and y'all turn around and vote right that minute, then, and you vote against what they're saying, then it's like they never want to come back because it's like they're not gonna listen to me. And I've heard this expressed from other folks around the city. Because I try to encourage people all the time to come to the meetings here to learn what's going on in their own city and to express themselves. So anyhow, like I said, I just, this is something that's been really bothering me for a while because I keep hearing and seeing the general public that feel insulted by coming in here and not being, they feel like they're not being heard. So maybe y'all could consider changing your policy. Also, I did work with public hearings with the federal government. So I do have a lot of experience there. And I'd be glad to look at your policies and maybe try to help you change some of the policies that you have.
Thanks for that input, I appreciate it. Oh, I'm so sorry. Do you mind saying your name for the record?
Oh, I thought I did. Adrian Zubor, Ogden resident.
Were you able to hear that okay? Thank you, thanks so much. I didn't notice in the confusion. Okay, up next we'll go to Angel Castillo, online.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. I really appreciate that we had the poet read at the beginning of the city council meeting. And I would like to point out something that makes me very hopeful. And that is the fact that Mayor Nadolsky was in actual attendance at the Martin Luther King celebrations that the Ogden and AAACP had. And that's important as I am an executive committee member. There has not been administration representation at these events. And so that gives me great hope that Mayor Nadolsky is out of the gate doing good on his People First, Community First campaign promises. I'd also like to give a shout out to our Public Works Department. We had a bunch of days with a lot of snow in a very short time. And I know no one is ever.
Any other, any other comments here? Well, something, or online? In one step. We did have 100% audience participation. Okay, great. Well, any comments or responses to some of the questions that were raised?
Chair, if I could comment about the public hearing issues, I, I very much appreciate the comment, and we've had, that's, that's come up a lot over the years, and, and, but I, but I, I hope, and this is, this is why I'm speaking, is I hope that people won't wait until the public hearing to give us their, their thoughts. All of us have email addresses that can be reached that way, and there's public comment on, at every meeting, and we hope that, that as you come up with some of these things, even if we've talked about it in a work session, or, or there's been something on the website, that's, we'd love to hear your comments. Earlier is certainly better than at the public hearing. Public hearing is kind of a statutory thing we have to do, but it isn't, I mean, it's certainly not the first thing that we, we are doing. We hope we can get your input much earlier, and, but I don't think there's any problem with us trying to, trying to work out to where we have a public hearing, and then maybe a decision at a later date too, in, in many cases, so, yeah, I think it's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I love that idea, it looks like Janine had a comment about that as well.
And I was just gonna say, we have made that change during the budget, so we do not take votes on the budget, you do on, those are always later, so we take, take public input and then have the votes later.
Yeah, and I love the feedback too, I know that since I've been on the council, there's been many, many times actually where comments from the public have actually caused us not to take a vote that night, we've changed for that reason. So I think it's fair to say that sometimes we've had discussions about the items many, many times, so we have kind of made our decisions, so I agree with that sometimes. I also know that, kind of to your point as well, because of the process and the legal requirements, sometimes some items are on a deadline, and we're trying to, Janine has been working on a process to try to get some of those items earlier, because sometimes we're up against a deadline of like the 180-day ordinance notice, I don't know all the technical terms, so sometimes there's a reason why that's happening, but we're definitely working to try to make it not such a time crunch, because otherwise sometimes we have to then make decisions because we've been pushed up against the deadline. And that's kind of on the administration part and our part to do that together, but I do appreciate that too. Any feedback from the administration about any of the items that were asked about?
Yeah, and so normally, we would convene in director's meeting this morning, but because we're gonna be spending three days together this weekend, budget retreat, we skipped the director's meeting, but I suspect we would have had a report on the question that was asked about the ordinance for snowplowing. So if it's okay, if we could put together a report for next, next meeting, we'd be happy to share that. I also wanted to share that I had a chance to meet with the public services employees in two tranches today, they're a really big department with new director taking over, he convened the team, gave me a good opportunity to meet a lot of the staff and, and speak with them, was sure to thank the snowplow team, they were there and they are exhausted, and they're preparing for a whole nother slam of snow. So I don't know about you guys, I have driven around town and driven through a number of different neighborhoods to look at the, the cars parked in there, are a ton, there are a ton of cars parked in the road when there's clearly driveway available, and so for anybody that's listening, I know we've got a big storm coming tonight, if you could just get your vehicle moved into your driveway, it would be a huge, huge help, especially when the driveway is available. There are, there are narrow roads that have vehicles parked on both sides, and we can only do one pass up the middle, and then, then the calls come that we haven't plowed the road, and when we follow up to go to those locations, it's, there's just nowhere to plow, there's nowhere to go, so anything residents can do to help would be a really, would be really appreciated, appreciated. But speaking of appreciation, thank you for waiting on all of those minutes until after I was out.
Any updates you'd like to share about the hangar or the wildlife? I don't know if you had a chance to get to those yet in your first two weeks.
You want, anything to add? No, we'll, we'll bring it back to you, thanks.
Great. Any council member comments?
I'll have one, I'll say one. I think it's great to have the Hof delegates here. This is my second go around, some of us, it's our second go around. Early on, as a council member, I remember there was a discussion about should we continue it or not. I, I, I dare say, you can tell, it definitely does mean a lot to our, to our sister city Hof, and, and the opportunity they have to partner with us, so I, I appreciate the, the care and, and thoughtfulness of continuing to harbor that, that partnership with our sister city, and, and I know Janine doesn't get a lot of credit, but thanks for everything that she put together for this week for them, so they're, they come exhausted and they leave exhausted, and so you, you really do a great job of, of making sure they get to see a lot of wonderful things while they're here, and so I, thanks to Janine, and thanks to the administration for, for everything that we do to, to continue to foster those relationships.
For sure. Any other comments?
Chair, I, I do want to also thank our Public Works people for the gargantuan effort to clear, clear the snow, and as my role, and I hate to be a Debbie Downer at all, but if I could just pass on the request for some of our citizens to take a little bit more time around the intersections, you know, make them a little bit better to, sometimes they're a little challenging after the snowplows have been by, so.
You mean, having the residents clean it up, or?
No, the, the snowplows, if, I think they can, you know, they can just be a little more careful around the intersections to make sure that it passes both ways, and not just plow one, one road clear out, so, just, and, and they, they know how to do that, they're, they're pros, they know how to do it, just, if they just were aware, or, you know, just know they needed to.
The only thing I wanted to ask about, which I didn't get a chance to in the work session, is I did have some constituents reach out about snow removal, especially on 25th Street and the sidewalks, how there's like the big banks of snow, and I still know, I know that residents are responsible for cleaning up their own sidewalks, right, which, you know, obviously, everybody hopefully tries to do their best ability, but I don't know if there's anything we can do at the city, because I was even noticing, I was on Washington Boulevard today, and I was trying to, I just, I had my snow boots on the first time I did it, so I wasn't as worried, but then the second time when I didn't, I didn't, and it was pure ice, and it's even where the pedestrian crossing walks are, so I just, I get concerned about that, especially for ADA accessibility, I just don't know what, you know, how we can handle that, are those businesses responsible for removing that snow, or who, who's actually responsible, I guess that's the question. Do you all know? So like if a business, you know, all the businesses on Washington Boulevard and the businesses on 25th Street, are they responsible for helping to remove that snow?
My understanding is, they are, they are in front of their business.
And the, like where the ramps are for ADA accessibility on the corners?
That I'll have to look into a little bit on the, on the corner areas, but I know in front of their businesses, they are.
I mean, I know it's kind of hard to do across the whole city, but especially downtown, I guess, I mean, I guess I'm biased, I'm always thinking about downtown, but.
I was down there yesterday and today, and there are some pretty tricky and icy spots, it's, it's thick.
Yeah, I mean, even if you, I mean, you can find a parking spot, because my mother-in-law, in fact, was trying to go out, and I was like, nope, I'll take you, or something, because even if she found a parking spot, then she has to navigate like a giant ice hill at this point, right?
So we've had, we've had a team, it's been, it's been kind of fun to watch, I, on one hand, it's, it's hard to see the, the snowpot team struggling under the weight of all of the, all of the snow and all the, the public pressure.
It doesn't seem like it would be the snowplower people, because they are in a truck.
Correct, but, but the, it comes kind of from the same team, but we had, we've got an airport with airplanes landing too, and we've had some challenges making sure to keep up with removal there, so we've been repurposing a lot of staff from code services and CED, along with public services, to try and keep the operation whole. So the, and then the biggest challenge when it snows so heavily is those, those rubs that are reliably high up on the east bench, the Ross Drives of, of Ogden are so steep that if they even get a skiff, it is a really dangerous situation, so as the snow is pounding, we're prioritizing those really steep streets and steep neighborhoods, and when it comes down at that level, then it, it's almost like once they finish, and they start them back over again.
Yeah.
And then the, and then the airport has to remain, the runway has to remain clear, every hour has to get re-cleared again, and so we are, we are struggling during these really acute periods, and what, I think what ends up happening is that the 25th Street sidewalks probably take less, and, and the Union Station, you know, so you have these other areas, and people are walking on them at the same time, then it becomes ice, we've had incredibly cold temperatures, so it just becomes a really challenging, practical situation.
Well, like, I guess I'm hearing, like, people don't really know who's supposed to do it, so nobody does it, you know, you're like, well, who's actually, if it's the businesses, maybe we need to communicate with Ogden Downtown Alliance or something, so they can spread the word, to say, hey, it's your responsibility to remove this, you know, these blockages on the sidewalk.
Yep, and then what I noticed too, in walking there over the course of the last few days, is even if, even if the snow is clear, that's really not a great place to put it, because when you have that much snow, they're moving it away from the, from the businesses, but then you're pushing it toward the parking spots, and then people need to park, so there's only so much, there's only so much space to place the snow, when it's not melting either, so, it's become a real challenge, for sure.
If only we had a parking garage.
One day, we'll have a parking garage. For sure, we'll have to plow that, right?
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I'd be happy to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Ritchie, and a second by Councilmember Myers, so adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.